The, you know, the economics of outsourcing. I didn't know, you want to look at this exact contract?
Yeah, I want, I want, I want to have both, both contracts and we, and we can get the, the, that history information as well, but I, I, but that, that, that part of it is not in executive session.
Right.
So, so that's why I figured that the initial start of the whole conversation, it needs to be taken place in executive session because it's about the contracts. So, so it's, and then from that contract, from that conversation can stem that information that what you're talking about.
So is your question, what would it take to get out of our current contract?
That's, 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 that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not my question.
I think just one, we'll just initiate at the point of discussion.
Right, right, right.
You can just send that to executive.
I was gonna say, I mean, at staff level, I have no idea what you need right now. And unless the conversation's going with the superintendent where he can relay that to us, I.
I think David Strivinger, Mr. Strivinger, on, I think it would come through him and he would probably figure out what this needed for the discussion.
So if you're gonna write an email to the officers for the agenda, ask for the agenda.
Yeah.
Got it. So I guess until then.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking and then let, uh, the executives, uh, committee handle it how they want to approach it. They'll get more information, they'll talk to you, Dr. Conroy, because this is at this committee. I think if there's no other future topics, we're done.
And we need to talk about meeting day, technically you are scheduled for the fourteenth, which is during spring.
Yeah, and I'm.
So I was going to suggest we had moved finance to the seventh at five o'clock. Do you want to move your meeting during the week of, um, either the, on the sixth or the fifth, do you want to move the meeting that week first?
Well, I'd like to do it after spring break, it's okay with everybody.
Did we move the clock?
I, I asked if the clock, because the clock is scheduled to meet during spring break. And I wasn't sure if that was okay. So anyways, but, but going back to, um.
So when, um, week of the eighteenth, when do you want to meet?
And we don't know if the clock is meeting during that week.
Well, I mean, I think in spring break, we probably don't. So we need to, I can have that conversation with Ted Bar. I mean, we can, if y'all are looking for that following Wednesday, if that looks good, that's what we say.
Following Wednesday work?
The turn in?
Yeah. Right now, there's. The turn in sign?
Okay, and then it would probably, we were planning on having a clock meeting at the.
Right, so I'll, I'll talk with Chris Barber and see what his thoughts are on it.
Wednesday, April twentieth, is that right, Rob?
Yeah, so like four thirty or whatever, somewhere between four and four thirty, toward the clock, if that works out. And if it doesn't, we'll just have to email. But you know, if we get it before the next board meeting, I mean, that I can make an announcement too.
So you want to meet at four and four thirty?
Um, I'm kind of with four, I just didn't know if, uh, the dismissal schedule used to come, because that's always moot, moot.
Right.
So really, I suggest probably four thirty.
Just April twentieth is over, so.
Yes. And then if that changes, just let me know and you can, you can send emails and then confirm it on the fifth, when we go forward with this meeting. And that'll be facilities focused. So you'll bring back that facility use report with the.
Changes to current.
Yeah. I was kind of reviewed on the fly, I'm not sure.
Yes, no, yep.
And then just the construction update. I don't think there's anything else to have pending for facilities. What are we gonna start working on? I might have. Will we do your ARs or something?
I think we get all our.
No.
See if the counties.
I got, I got.
Object proposition.
I'm sorry, are we adjourned?
Not yet.
We're about to be.
Okay, I can't really hear you guys if you're whispering.
Yeah. So we'll just say tentatively, Wednesday, March twentieth, April thirtieth, April twenty. April twenty. Anything else?
Yep.
So, John, do you agree?
Hi.
All the favor?
Hi.
Be honest.
Where's Jared?
Want to pick up specifically that group, it may not be on that Wednesday.
Gotcha.
Wednesday works for us as staff because that's the day our collection centers are closed.
Okay.
Earth Day is actually on the, um, on Thursday.
Okay.
So, um, so, but just let us know if you would like to participate with county staff and we can make accommodations as such.
Okay, thank you.
How long do we have to work on that day?
You can work as long as you like, but we're gonna be working collectively from nine to two. So whether you come for an hour or whether you come for the whole five hours, we'll welcome anything that you have.
Tell them to come at eight.
There's a lot of trash out there, so you can work to your, uh, see if you can take it anymore. Alright, so, uh, the MRF, our material recovery facility, we talked about this a lot over the last year or so. Um, last month, we talked about a site sustainability camp or a site sustainability study for the entire sustainability campus. We're looking at fifty acres. Uh, what proved out of that, in my opinion at least, is that fifty acres in all one site is gonna be a very difficult challenge. Uh, addition to that, we've also met with Charleston County and some other MRFs that we visited and, uh, made a lot of sense that they broke those components up. Another thing that became apparent to us and, and especially looking at Charleston County is their MRF is state of the art facility, which is second to none. And that's exactly where we want to be. However, theirs is on twenty-two acres and has a price tag of thirty million dollars. Uh, I'm not sure that we're quite there yet. Uh, they also have a lot of capacity and aren't fully, uh, operating at that capacity right now. So they have room to grow, uh, I just wonder how all their math works. So I'm sure it does, they got it figured out, they're a smart bunch. So we're gonna take a little bit different approach and, and kind of bootstrap this and, and bring this into fruition. So we started looking internally and where we're looking at right now is moving forward at our public works south campus. So taking the space that we already have, it's already in industrial use, uh, putting about a twenty-five thousand square foot building there. Uh, we'll have to do some rerouting on how we use that site and then, um, look at some smaller equipment. So again, they had some state of the art, big, long equipment, uh, at Charleston. There's some other technologies out there that are smaller but same purpose. So that's what we're looking at right now. We're about to put out an RFQ for engineering design and architecture, so just to update. Our goal at large is our contract expires for our recyclables, uh, at the end of August. So our goal, our beginning of August, so our, of twenty twenty-three, so our goal is to have this up and going. So we're, we're have a tight schedule, but we feel like we can, uh, deliver on that day to be open. And then also in solid waste is we got a really great, uh, video from the school district. Uh, it's about a minute and a half, so bear with me on this, but I think it's worthwhile. This is something in partnership with the school district, uh, that they had a contest and this is a billboard, uh, can you, has anybody seen this billboard yet? Or anybody know where it is? Alright, you'll see it on the way home. Well, maybe not, it's too dark. Um, it's on one seventy, but listen to this if you will.
Driving by a special billboard. A Beaufort Elementary School student won the Beaufort County's Department of Solid Waste and Recycling poster contest and had her artwork turned into this billboard.
I technically drew like what the meaning of definition of reduce, recycle and reuse is. And then I just put it all with words and my brother kind of helped me with the words. But I came up with it because like I wanted people to see it so like they can see examples and how they can do the three Rs too.
The billboard is located on Highway one seven eight in the Okentee and Bluffton area.
I was just speechless. I was like happy that my family could see it too and they can be proud of me.
Vivian, along with several of her classmates, entered the competition during a science class.
We were doing ecosystems and learning about the importance of the water, the air, the nutrients returning back to the soil to provide food for the plants. And how we could be better stewards of the environment so that our plants would be healthy, our food would be healthy, things like that. And so we were studying composting and recycling and it just tied all in with the project that we were working on.
The competition was held in November in honor of America Recycles Day and the billboard was recently installed. Vivian says she hopes when people drive by and see the artwork, it reminds them how important it is to care about the environment.
I think it's a part for people to recycle so there's not trash laying everywhere on the ground, on the whole entire world. So pollution, groundwater and animals eat it.
For winning the competition, Vivian was also given a prize pack of art supplies and a reusable water bottle. For the Beaufort County School District, Ron Lowes.
Very nice.
Searching for a better one?
So again, this is part of the, the solution is education and we recognize that. And we're thankful for the school district and everything they're working with and also our solid waste department for that coordination. So look forward on one seventy, I haven't seen it either, so, um, I'm sure it's out there and looks great, so. Uh, at Public Works, as mentioned previously, we're working on our accreditation through American Public Works Association. We are nearing completion, we're at ninety-two percent complete on that. We have the audit team coming in to audit our, our books, uh, in May. And then again, hopefully be ready for the national convention to show that we have been accredited by the Public Works Association. So it'll be a great honor and hopefully we'll be ready for the summer. And then lastly, uh, in ARPA, so we have now hired both our project manager, um, Hank Ammonson. He's our special projects director in charge of ARPA and our finance manager, Christine Webb. Uh, they're both fully engaged and working collectively and together on the ARPA projects. Uh, following next Monday's reading, their third and final reading at council meeting. Um, you'll start to see more action and implementation of those projects. So they are actively working on it, coordinating with our partners on all the different projects. And you're about to see a lot more, uh, output on that. So Councilman Ryman, that is my report. So glad to take any questions.
It's always comprehensive, thank you. We open up for questions and comments from, uh, council members? Well, ask one or two, can't resist.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, on the, on the one seventy, uh, when they had the CTC workshop, I think it was back in February. One of the conversations back and forth with DOT was whether they were gonna pull ahead the resurfacing on the ramps at, um, where one seventy intersects the two seventy-eight ramps. Uh, there seemed to be kind of a consensus that that made a lot of sense because of the, uh, economies of scale doing it all at one time. I- i- is that still an open issue or is that getting resolved in their minds?
No, it's something we'll follow up on with them. Uh, so DOT, where all they separate mainline from ramps. Um, so when they say one set or two seventy-eight, they're gonna pave that, they may not necessarily be talking about their ramps. So gotta clarify to make sure that we're talking the same language. Um, but yes, I think they're not talking definitely about two seventy-eight, so they have that program, but that will be a following year. So the actual ramp itself, we're gonna be repaving at least portion of the ramp. Uh, it's whether the other three ramps, they wanna look at at the same time and we'll coordinate a little bit further.
Uh, secondly, um, the, uh, light at, I think it's Tide Watch. Um, there'd been, been some conversation over time about whether, uh, we could put a increase, change the signals in order to improve the safety, because it is congested and have been fatalities along four sixty-two. Uh, wha- what's kind of the status of that in terms of rolling it either into the current project or literally just going and doing it sooner, because it looks to me like the pavement is already there, it's just a matter of changing the signals.
Yeah, so, uh, we have it scheduled just to have the turn signal to be installed. Um, if we didn't have information from DOT, we could go and install that right away as part of our signal maintenance agreement. However, they have already made us aware that they have studied that signal and that it did not warrant a left turn signal. So, uh, that was two thousand eighteen, three years ago now, four years ago. So we are updating that signal so we can make justification that it does meet that. Um, however, if they're not opposed for us to do an improvements, but it may not be a turning signal if they review our justification and, and don't find favorable. Um, in that element, that would require a geometric, so there'd be some geometry there that changed. It would cost more than what just adding the actual signal head would cost. Um, so there's some improvements that we plan to make, but our goal is that, um, we can update the justification and, and present that to DOT and hopefully get the turn, left turn signals there as part of this project, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question.
Seeing, uh, anybody online have a question? I can't see everybody, so if somebody, uh, has a question, speak up. Seeing none, um, why don't you move on and you probably take eight, nine and ten together, these are all, uh, contract awards, if you would.
Okay, I can talk through them. So, uh, the first one is, uh, purchase of a tur- a Tiger Cat truck. So this is basically a mower arm, this helps us get a lot of, uh, brushes cut in an expeditious manner. We have an existing one that has, uh, pretty high mileage for the work that it does. Um, this was something we were able to do with a Sourcewell contract, so rather than bid it out, a traditional bid. Uh, it's on state contract, we have a cost for two hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred, or five hundred and seventy-two dollars. This is already programmed in Public Works twenty-two fiscal budget. Um, so the recommendation would be to move forward with that contract award. The number nine. Get to it. Is, uh, this is for the building HVAC replacement here on the admin building. So, uh, this building, as you all are aware, is thirty years old. Um, the rooftop unit is together, holding together with some gum tape right now. Um, they actually quit making the parts to our, um, HVAC, it's that old. So in one way, it's valuable because it's antique, in other way, it's not valuable because it, it barely works. Um, so we put it out in a bid, we got three bids, the lowest bid is Triad Mechanical Contractors for four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, this would be funded out of geo bond that we have already obligated. So the staff recommendation is to make award on that project. And then another, uh, HVAC, this is for Burton Wells HVAC replacement. Uh, that is not quite as old, so not quite as valuable, but it's a twenty-year-old rooftop in need of repair or in need of replacement. We had four bids, our four bidders on that for a, a little bid at Coastal Air Technologies for four hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. This too is out of the same geo bond that we have programmed for expenditure. So staff recommendation would be to move forward with that contract award as well.
Unless there's an objection, I'll take these together and I might look for a motion to approve items eight, nine and ten, which are contractual awards.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend that we approve items eight, nine and ten to move forward.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, is there any, uh, conversation or questions on these?
Just one if I could, um, going back to item number nine, um, when I first came on council, there was a big issue about mold. Um, was that some of the reason for that problem?
So, well, so part of the, the geo bond is actually from the, the original lawsuit that we had to repairs on the building. Um, so we moved forward with doing repairs on this, uh, two things is the roof and the HVAC units. And those will both address the mold. The roof, we're working on a separate solicitation, that'll be coming hopefully, um, next PFC meeting. Uh, so they're kind of separate, but they work together in tandem. Um, so this is just for the HVAC, the other one will be basically the roof in the building envelope.
Okay. Any other comments, are they online? Seeing none, um, any objection to voting on all three of these together? Not seeing any, uh, these will stand approved without objection. That takes us to items number eleven and twelve. I assume, John, you're gonna talk to us? And you need a scorecard to keep up with John, he keeps getting new grants all the time to apply for. Um, and, uh, even though we talked about a little bit at, at finance, we may have some people on board that weren't on that meeting. You might just give us a real, real brief overview of kind of what your plan is for the new terminal and.
Sir, absolutely. Jared was talking about antiques and we have one of our own down at Hilton Head Island Airport that we'll replace. Uh, but the, the first grant opportunity I wanted to talk to you about is a bipartisan infrastructure law. And there's a few opportunities inside that one piece of legislation. Uh, one of those, I explained during finances, was called AIG and that's basically very similar to normal FAA grants. So we'll have to apply for that money each year, but it's allocated to each airport based on a formula. So for the commercial airports, it's enplanements and certain other things. For the general aviation airports, it's basically your size and classification of the airport. So that would be a pretty standard amount each year that, that we will apply for. Uh, the second is AIG competitive, so that's inside of the, uh, the first category. But each year for the next five years, as part of the BIL, there'll be twenty million dollars available for competitive grants for airports that own their own tower, control tower like we do at Hilton Head. And that tower is in the federal contract program, which ours is. So that is a useful program because that can help upgrade the equipment inside the tower. So that'll be something that we'll look for. That notice of funding opportunity is not out yet. But I'll probably be, I think that's due out in either April or May, so I'll be coming forward again to talk about applying for some of those funds so that we can upgrade the tower. And then the last is the airport terminal program that we talked about during the finance committee. And that's the one that we have submitted, that, uh, submittable is, is due next week, but we're a little bit ahead. And that's the one where I said the FAA has about ninety-seven million a year for the next five years for airports of our size at Hilton Head Island. So we're applying, um, for thirty million of that money in order to get that, uh, terminal project funded, that construction funded. So those are the three portions of the BIL and the two that we'll be applying for will be, and I, this is extremely confusing, I know, and I apologize for the acronyms. But the AIG, which is Airport Infrastructure Grant.
Okay.
Will apply for one each for Hilton Head Island Airport and Beaufort Executive. Okay, so those, that's one grant. And then the other one will be the ATP, the Airport Terminal Program, and that's for Hilton Head Island Airport. So those are the, the grants within the BIL that we're applying for.
The AIG order of magnitude, do you have a sense of what the IBL will report?
Yes, and, and that might change year to year based on enplanements and other things, but it's about one point four billion a year for Hilton Head Island. And it's about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year for Beaufort Executive. And there are match, different match amounts for those, uh, but again, it's an opportunity for additional grant funds, so we're happy to match that.
Okay, good. Questions for John? Comments? Anybody?
Chris, Mark?
No. Chris?
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I can't see it.
Thank you. Really stupid question, um, but I'm really curious. Are there airports that don't own their own tower? And how does, how does that work?
That is a good question and there, there are FAA owned towers at some airports. So there's a bunch of different configurations, but that does exist, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
This is just for approval to apply, so.
It is.
I assume there are no objections and so therefore this can, oh, I say, I guess probably need a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Joe, second?
I'll second.
Seeing no objections, we'll let, uh, John apply to his heart's content for more money.
And that's items eleven and twelve.
Right. Eleven and twelve, okay. Uh, that takes us to thirteen and fourteen, I think we can take those together, Jared, they both look like they're, um, right-of-way related items.
They are indeed. So thirteen, um, this is for right-of-way along Whittle Road, so Whittle Road is a legacy road. Um, we're, you know, trying to perfect our right-of-way. This is a section, uh, that actual, some of the community, citizens from the community came and approached us, but we weren't able to do major repairs on it. There's a section, it's actually a five mile long. Uh, there's a portion that's first paved, which is state-owned, and then there's five miles that is, is county-owned. Um, and through that five miles towards the end of it, there's a group of homeowners that live at the very end, which is on the marsh there to the far right. Uh, and as you can see, there's a couple spots there, uh, where it goes over the marsh. And this area during a high, high tide really, uh, floods where for a period of a couple hours, those, those homeowners are stranded. So if they had any emergency needs, um, they ignored the traffic, the EMS committee there. So anyhow, we, we had that conversation with the, with the citizens and in order for us to expend funds on it in any meaningful way, um, we were going to need this right-of-way. So we don't have any, uh, plans as far as paving for this road, but, um, this at least gives us the flexibility to do some improvements later to take a look at that. So that's what this one is for Whittle Road. Uh, the second one is for Coussau River Drive. This is a similar, uh, legacy road, just perfecting the right-of-way. This is not on our current paving list, but just a road where, uh, every now and then we have landowners that, that wanna be proactive in their approach. And so is this one, so that's what these two are about and gladly take any questions.
Question, anybody online?
Yeah, if I may, um.
Gerald, go ahead.
Uh, Jared?
Yes, sir.
Being that we are, being that we are obtaining the right-of-way on, on these two roads, um, once we do the improvement, uh, will we be, how often will we be doing maintenance on these roads?
The maintenance, we're already doing maintenance on these roads. Um, what this would allow us if we do improvements like, uh, either substantial rocking projects or paving projects. But those are not planned on either of these roads at this moment.
We do, we do maintenance on, on legacy roads, we do not do any improvements. If you all recall, Whittle Road was before you all several months ago, from a gentleman that came a few times. Um, he did not really address the real problem with Whittle Road. And that was the flooding, uh, that happens, uh, during king tides, uh, as Jared alluded to. So I met with the community a couple of times and told them the only way we could correct that problem and it not continue would be for them to sign over the right-of-way. And they're working to do that right now so that we can put in the necessary pipe and to carry the water under the road instead of it going over the top of the road and washing it out, so.
Thank you.
Uh, seeing no other comments, uh, are there any objections?
Yeah, I just got, um.
Oh, yeah, you're okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 this, this, um, this, normally you send a map, I didn't get a map on this, so.
There's a map in the back of there.
Oh, okay, it didn't came out, I didn't print it out. Where, tell me where these roads are.
So, yeah, sure, uh, Whittle Road is north of the air station.
North of the air station?
North of the air station, yes, sir. And then, um, uh, Coussau is off of Sam's Point Road, so Ladies Island.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any objections?
Well, we have to have a motion.
I don't need, any objections to a motion?
No, no objections to a motion, I will.
Somebody make a motion.
I will make the motion for items thirteen and fourteen.
Larry seconds. Any objections now? If not, uh, these two, um, stand approved without objection. That brings us to our last one outside the executive session, which, uh, is road paving contract.
Yep, so this continues the theme of, of perfecting the right-of-way. And then once we had the right-of-way perfected, we loaded up into our dirt road paving plan. And this is year three of our dirt road paving plan. So again, we have a five-year dirt road paving plan. Uh, the three roads that are included in this year would be Twickenham Road, Northview Road and Rainbow Road. So we put out a solicitation, we had two bidders. Uh, these are design build contracts, so the architect, or the engineer is in sync with the contractor, so they bid on a full stock and barrel. Um, we had a cost estimate, just a little over two point five million dollars and the bids came in just a little over two point six. So within two percent, that is fantastic, given today's economy, uh, and what we're seeing in bids. And then they're even more, more specific, they're less than one percent or right at one percent of each other. So we feel very comfortable in the competitiveness of these bids. Uh, as typical on our dirt road pavings, we put in a contingency, just general contingency as well as, uh, mucking. So if the road bed gets there and it's, and it's not very good, suitable for construction, we put a contingency factor in there. So we have a contingency of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, a little over that, which brings us to a total contract value of two million eight hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine, excuse me, not contract value. Um, our, our value that, that we work from. So, uh, our, this would be funded from tag fees, that's where we pave our roads from, is from, from tag fees. Uh, which has a balance there as shown. So our recommendation would be to move forward with the JH Hire's construction bid, um, for the year three resurfacing.
Just leave about a mil- a million three in the account?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Questions?
I might add something to that, uh, since it is coming from tag fee, I wanted to give you all an update about, uh, what's going on with the tag fee. Uh, I was contacted around lunchtime today by the, um, Association of Counties. Uh, and I'm doing, this is twofold, I'm providing public information, but I'm also gonna, uh, go to staff direction and say to me from having to write an email after this is all over this afternoon. I was contacted by SCAC today saying that there will be a hearing tomorrow in Columbia with the Senate Committee on a bill called S nine eighty-four. That is the tag fee fix from the Supreme Court ruling. And they've asked me to drive up there tomorrow and testify, uh, before that hearing at three o'clock tomorrow. So I'm gonna go to Columbia, help the association and counties out on that. So I'm gonna go to Columbia, help the association and counties out on that so that you all are aware of that. So if that gets out of committee tomorrow, that issue can get dealt with during this legislative session and hopefully correct the tag fee items. So here's the direction for staff, Jared, Tom, and Whitney. I need talking points about how this is gonna affect us financially, what we use the tag fee for, and what the legal ramifications are for us if we continue and do not have this resolved during this session. So anyway, are we glad to answer any questions about that if anybody has any?
That's wonderful. I do, one of the famous roads in my area that we've been working on for several years is up for paving, but I don't see it on this list.
That's on year, which road is it?
Harrison.
Harrison, that's already in year two, so that one is under contract. And I believe the contract is by the end of the fall that it should be completed. There's a couple of other roads on that, but I don't have the schedule in front of me. But, so it should be completed by the end of this fall.
Great, thank you.
I have no questions.
Okay, anybody online?
Yeah, Jared, the Twickenham Road has been a problem road for us for years. And to finally get to the point where we're getting it paved, it's gonna save us a lot of man hours and actual supplies that is always needed during the inclement weathers out in that area. So I'm glad to see this coming about. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this recommendation.
Thank you, Gerald, second?
Second.
Larry seconds, any further discussion?
This one, quick one. 2.6 million, so that roughly about two and a half miles of dirt road being paved.
Yeah, well, usually about a million dollars a mile as far as the construction, that includes drainage and all. So I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as the exact mileage, but that's about right.
Right, okay.
One thing to note too, on, just, just for everybody, we put one out every year based off our cycle. So we already have a five-year, we're working on starting another five-year review. So we'll have that without missing a beat. This has been a pretty successful program, not pretty, it has been a wildly successful program. And one thing that we've been doing is this design build approach. So rather than us go design the roads and, and as soon as we get the right-of-way, we put it out in the bid. But it takes about 18 months. So even though we're, just like you said, where's, where's the last one? That one's under contract, it has been in design, and now the contractor's working on it. So these roads, Mr. Dawson, is, is gonna get constructed, but first it's gotta, it's about nine months of design and permitting, and then about nine months of construction for the three roads. So just to share everybody's information.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any objections to funding this project? Seeing none, this will stand approved without objection. That takes us to need for an executive session. And it has to do with pending claims, which are covered under attorney-client privilege. And this relates to the landing at Buckingham, which is under litigation. And Buckingham Landing is our terminal for the buskey pit.
I will move for executive session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
We do not expect any matters arising after this, so folks can, anyone that's part of our staff can leave.
Yeah, and I, I had all of my comments, so I don't anticipate anything either, so, thank you. So anyway, without objection, we will move to executive session and do not anticipate any action coming out of that executive session.
The business for public facilities, we stand adjourned.
You're going to call them.